I'm just going to let you all know tonight, these mics in front of you are not operational. We're, as you know, we're in the process of changing through all of this equipment. And if it's not, um, obviously we're halfway through, so none of these TVs, which are all new, are working right now. That's why we have this setup and these are your microphones. They're gonna, we did it last night with our finance. It works fine. These Bluetooth boxes.
Everything else?
The only thing that I would say is for the benefit of the people in the audience, it does help to speak up.
But so you're saying these things pick it up?
These boxes will pick up for anybody on Zoom. Penny, can you hear us? And looks like she's frozen.
Not yet.
Hi. This is what we did last night and we seem to be good to go. So you are recording and.
Yeah, Penny is frozen.
Yeah, she looks like she's frozen.
It's cold down. She's out there.
There's anybody else?
Thanks, Hillary.
Colin, can you hear us or Bob?
Tucker, I can hear you.
We can hear you, Tucker. Thank you.
That's operational. Okay.
Ready?
You ready?
Okay, um, so we now, uh, call to order our special meeting of the town of New Canaan Town Council is set for six thirty PM on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. So we will, uh, want to first do the roll call.
Sure. Rita Patino?
Here.
Tom Butterworth?
Here.
Jennifer Fons?
Here.
Luke Kaufman?
Here.
Mike Morrow?
Here.
Maria Norton?
Here.
Kimberly Norton?
Here.
Hillary Ormond?
Yes.
Christina?
Here.
Eric Loonan?
Here.
Penny Young? Jennifer? Zonis?
Yes.
Okay, all here.
Excellent. Uh, why don't we start with the pleasure allegiance next? Luke, you want to start it up?
The pleasure allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, alright. Right, um, so let's, uh, let's first, uh, item number two on the agenda is the, uh, the minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
My order, if I had an objection for the minutes, would I do it after we?
What is the? He would make a motion, someone make a second and then comments.
Yeah. So after he did that or right now?
It really doesn't matter. I mean, if he wants to make a motion, have somebody second it and then it's discussion. So.
Okay.
So if we could have a motion?
So move.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Um, so would I, I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes.
Say you have comments to make.
Okay, comments tonight for the.
Please.
Okay, so, um, so, um, just looking at the minutes, first of all, thanks for the, the great recap for the, um, uh, recap summary of the ice shrink recap. I thought it was wonderful. Um, but it didn't recap the personal statement. It mentioned that I asked for. Right, okay. It, it mentioned that I asked to make a personal statement, which is approved, but then it didn't have any summary. So I was going to suggest, um, just a quick, like, one line summary of the personal statement. So I would suggest. Um, sorry, I like ran here just to try to make this.
This meeting on time.
Uh, Ms. Patino addressed false accusations leveled at her and others within an RTC email newsletter during the election. That is the summary of the statement. We don't have to go into the details, but at least having that. I would suggest.
Okay.
I made a motion to include those words.
I just, I think it leaves a little out of, like, there's a lot of context missing for that incident. Like, I didn't even know what you were talking about. So I don't know. If we need to go into detail that doesn't, isn't really. Reflect what we even knew.
Well, I, but I, I mean, I gave the detail on my personal statement, which was recorded. Um, I think it, it, that's exactly what I did. I addressed false accusations that were within that. Uh, email. So I'm not saying what they are. People can go and listen to what I said, but, um, I addressed the false accusations. That was my personal statement.
What is the, um, where is the reference to it in the minutes?
There isn't.
I thought you said that the motion was made.
Yes, there was that.
Could you repeat what you wanted to add?
Um, so I said, I just as a summary, Ms. Patino addressed false accusations leveled at her and others within an RTC email newsletter during the election.
I don't think we can characterize the, in the minutes as false. That's a fact question.
So just accusations then?
I would just simply say that the motion related to, uh, addressing accusations, uh, I would say just say during, during the campaign, most recent campaign, a level against you personally.
So, yeah. Um, yeah, so I think I mentioned me and others, but either way, it's fine.
Well, if you addressed others, then you'll tell you. Alright, so we'll, we'll, we'll leave it, we'll leave it at that.
Great, thank you.
That was the very.
That was the very end.
Okay.
Could you rephrase it so that I can?
Sure. Ms. Patino addressed accusations leveled at her and others. Within an RTC email newsletter during the campaign.
Will we say? I still want to go down the rabbit hole of you identified the RTC. I think it's just better to say that it's dressed or accusations of level of you and others during most recent campaign. There's, it's been a lot of putback.
I was stressing specific accusations that were false, by the way, to me and others. I, I don't see, I don't see a need not to say. Where they came from, just because people may not like it. I mean, that's where they came from.
I'm not, I'm not sure it's not like, I, I just, I didn't see them. So I, I don't know where the, I don't, do we actually know? Sent them out? I don't know.
Yes, the RTC. I can send you the email. There's, I mean, there's an email that was sent out with accusations. And, and they refer to me being on, several people getting on town council. That is why I felt the need to trust them.
Alright, um, level of her and others during the mo, during, uh, her others.
During the most recent campaign.
Well, but I do think it's, I do want to clarify that where they came from. It, it has nothing to do, it's just a fact and it's where they came from. So I, it's, it's, it was a personal statement that I made.
It's here.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Wait a minute.
Just.
I was mentioned and town council was mentioned and there was, it was suggested that people should be concerned about that. I did.
Deanna, this is a town council meeting?
Hold on.
Yeah.
Hold on.
She's an ex-officio member.
With, just, hold on. I, I'm okay with a s- summary statement to be put into the minutes. The problem is, I'm going to be very careful about when it becomes too overtly political. Um, and I would, I'd rather, you know, you said the, your statements were made last time on the record. They're there forever. They're there on YouTube and, and, and everything, all its full context of how you said it. I think for purposes of the minutes, I just think we could say simply. You addressed these accusations that were made, uh, against you and others during the campaign. I think we should just leave it at that. I just, going further into the RTC said it, and I just, I think we should just leave it at that.
I, yeah, I, I mean, again, it's, it's what I said. It's a summary of what I said. If you look at the other summaries that were included, they were pretty specific about certain things. I feel like we're leaving this out, um, on purpose. I, I don't want to prolong this because I think we have other things to do tonight. Um, but I. Uh, I don't agree with leaving it out. Because I think it was important. I mean, the point was, and at the end, I, I mentioned that I think we should be, you know, focusing on what, um, yes, of what unites us, but. We should also be not letting, having zero tolerance for this type of behavior.
Oh, I get that. And, and that's why I, I, you know, when you asked me to put it on, you know, and, and, and you, I appreciate that. I think your comments that you made were, I think, should, we'll keep them there. And I just think for purposes of the minutes, we certainly will absolutely augment it to reflect that, like, you made your statements, you addressed those accusations. You know, uh, made during the campaign season. I think we just leave it at that. And the comments that you made on the record will stand. They're out there for anyone who wants to, you know, check them out into the future.
Okay, I'm willing to conference.
I would, I would encourage all of you to, if you haven't seen a copy of it though, to take a, to take a look.
Yeah, I'm happy to send it to you. And, and again, it was, the reason I brought it up in town council is because I was, well, several of us were pointed out as being on town council. And that's why I thought it was really important to mention it here, because if anyone's reading that and having any concern, um, especially with what. I and others were accused of, that was really offensive and problematic, and I felt like I needed to address it.
Hundred percent, Rita, and I, I, and you, we made the motion.
And I appreciate, I appreciate. Glad to move on. Thank you.
Okay, any other, uh, amendments to the minutes? It's me.
Role model.
Uh, okay.
Amendment for motion then to approve as amended the minutes.
Okay, so we will have an amended motion to approve the minutes as amended tonight here, uh, stated on the record and is recorded by.
Second.
You? And a second? All in favor?
Okay, so unanimous?
Unanimous.
I'm assuming it's unanimous, except we didn't see Penny, but she, uh, she is, she's remote tonight, but she can have her, uh, video off, so. I think we're going to leave her as just an abstain since we don't have a vote one where there, she's multitasking. She's not moving what's overlapping that she needs yet, so. I think we'll just leave her as an abstain.
Alrighty, um, we will now move to item agenda number, or agenda item, number three, public comments. So are there any public comments in the audience or out in TV land?
Nope.
Somebody here? You were? Uh, okay, we'll move on to first selectmen's comments. Item number four on the agenda. Welcome.
Welcome, everyone.
Welcome to you.
New. Um, speaking right first, selectmen comments, not discussion comments. Um, so I guess the things that I'm going to, uh, mention are first, the revow, I'm sure you have all, um, gotten your notices and I'm making sure all the various boards and commissions. Are aware that, you know, MuniVal sent, uh, a letter to all residents with their revised, um, evaluation, you know, property valuations. People need to remember that's your property valuation. That is not your taxes. You will not have your revised taxes until, um, May of twenty twenty-four, when the Board of Finance sets the new mill rate. Um, you know, so the average, uh, the average over the entire town is a twenty-five percent increase in property valuations. So if you were to be taxed today, the mill rate would have declined. The, by the amount to have the same taxation. So people just need to know it's not your taxes. I know there's tons of misinformation circulating around town, so if people can help, especially you as board members. Just circulate that that is not what that is. And we should all be happy that our property values are going up. You know, it's, uh, if you sell your property today, you're getting more than you did last year or five years ago, probably. It's, um, we're also in the middle of, uh, town's budget cycle, so I'm meeting with the various boards or the various departments in town and going through line by line, which is so much fun for everyone, I'm sure. But as a new first selectman, it's important to, for me to understand all the detail, uh, behind all the various budget items. So, um, rest assured, we are doing a very deep dive on the budget this year. Before it even comes to the Board of Selectmen, so, um. Also, uh, and then I'll be meeting, um, with the Chairman of the Board of Finance next week to start to, um, offer guidance, but I didn't want to do that until I met with all the departments. Um, and understood sort of where we really are and what the needs are of the, of the town. I didn't think it was a real fruitful exercise until I had done that. Um, the other sort of problem, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out, but, uh, the town was notified last week, late last week, that our pension fund. Uh, manager and administrator is no longer managing public funds. So that's Vanguard. Vanguard was bought by Mercer. Mercer has chosen, uh, to no longer manage. Public funds. So we need to find, they originally told us by February first, which I think is, um, unreasonable, but, um, they said they wanted all assets out of their, uh, funds by February first. So we are, we're working through getting an extension on that. That's, especially with the holidays and everything else, it's ridiculous, but, um, that was what we were told. And then we'll have a little bit more time to find a new administrator. So we are working with our current pen, pension fund advisor, hooker, hooker and full. Hold on, sorry. Um, to sort of plan for that, we have met with the Pension Advisory Group in town, which is Board of Finance members and, and town, town hall employees. Um, to sort of strategize. We're going to be putting out an RFP, um, for a new pension, um, you know, manager and administrator. So, um, stay tuned, but just to add a little. Chaos to the budget and my first two and a half weeks on the job. Um, that's, that's where we are. Um. And, oh, and ending on a good note, we, I'm sure you probably have heard, we got a two million, well. Yeah. On Friday, Parker will be voting on a two million dollar bond for the playhouse. This is an economic development grant through the Office of Policy and Management. Um, and it will go to offset, um, the costs on the renovation of the playhouse. So it's excellent news and, uh, you know, kudos to our legislators, you know. I think last summer, Brian Fazio was putting in the grant application and then Tom was doing some work and then, um, Lucy brought the governor last week. So, um, at that time, I, I think every store we were in, Tom was asking every merchant to highlight the view of the playhouse. So, um, you know, it was, it was a great, it was a great day. And, um, you know, thank you to the governor and to the state and to all our legislators who worked as a team to help New Canaan get this great grant. So. So that's a great way to go into the holidays. Anyway. Thank you. I don't think it's questions, it's comments.
Can I comment back?
Just if there is confusion about the tax and the rebound implication, is there a press release or something that goes?
All on the website.
And Todd Labriary wrote it.
Yes, there's a letter that's linked on the website.
But not everyone goes to the website.
And it went out to all the press outlets. I know that I covered his, his article. Um, and then there's also, uh, linked on that, uh, a link to MuniVal and the letter and all that kind of stuff.
But just like the, the sentences you said just says it all, you know, like so short and sweet.
Yeah.
It's kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah. I always say, we have to get everyone to, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can. We're trying to get the information out there. If people have suggestions for other outlets, you know.
Do we have an Instagram, like a town Instagram? I mean, they're like that. I mean, that's not the only thing, but.
We've been using all of that.
Yeah, then it sounds like you're doing, it sounds like you're doing everything. It's, the, the trick is doing multiple ways, right? So you're hitting different types of, you know, audiences. So it sounds like that's what you're doing.
Yeah. And just room out with neighbors is probably the best.
I wanted to say congratulations to you and all of the selectmen that won. It's very exciting for the town to have all new leadership across the way and very excited to have you up here and, uh, look forward to a great relationship moving forward. So anything we can do to help, just let us know.
I just add a quick one, just a comment. Uh, what you said about the tax is not going up would be true of me because I think my, my appraisal is, uh, about at the average. However, if it had been much greater than the average, I actually could get a tax increase.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct. On average, it will be the same, but you're right. If you were significantly above the average revaluation, you'll have a higher than, than average, you know. And every year, you know, the budget goes up every year, you know, the town and the Board of Ed both have bargaining units, have contractually obligated, um, increases to salary. So it's not like we're, and that's most of the budget. So, um, it's not like there's a lot of room to, um, you know, whittle with. So, you know, most people could probably expect, you know, an average increase to their taxes that they've always seen. Plus, you know, if, if they're above the average, then that will, you know, obviously have to.
But a mill rate reduction is great news. If that, and if we see that coming, and that's the impact on our taxes, right? Even if our property values are higher. So I do think that sort of two sentence summary for people is, you know, but the mill rate. It's a good news that our town is valued so much higher, right? Like you have made a great investment here and the mill rate will likely come down. So.
And your auto, your auto taxes will likely go down unless you buy a brand new car.
Right. Deanna.
It just got, as I was coming in here, just, no, just, just door. I was like, oh, my first, first day with a new car. It's like, I'm first.
I'd just like to mention one detail. If, if people have, uh, a question about the revow, they have until December twenty-seventh or twenty-ninth. To call the company for them to reassess.
And they've been down there. They've been having regular meetings downstairs. You'll see the chairs.
Right.
People have been scheduling appointments.
Right, but I wanted to mention it. So if anybody's watching, they could capture that. Otherwise afterwards, it goes to the Board of Assessment.
And that date is on the letter that MuniVal sent.
Okay.
That you can register to meet with them. So.
Okay.
All of that.
Great.
A lot of people down there.
Yeah, really, yeah, I'm sure.
But they don't find that it's a lot. Yeah, I, I've asked them every day. I, I go and say hello every day and I said, how's it going? And they're like, it's fine.
They just have questions, you know. And it's, it's totally by appointment if people want to.
You can't just show up.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, moving along. Number five on the agenda, the New Canaan Nature Center presentation.
Hi, everybody. Yeah, so apologies for some people have heard this for the third time, but.
Things changed.
Alright, hello, everybody. Uh, for those who don't know, my name is Bill Flynn. I'm the Executive Director of the New Canaan Nature Center. I have been so for almost seven years. Uh, I have been at the nature center for, um, fourteen years. And I also live on property. So if you've ever wondered who's, who's in that house, that's me and my wife, who is the director of our preschool and our son, who's at Southeastern Secondary. So that's my story. Um, today, uh, we have a few direct updates, but love to, um, give this presentation. This is actually a, um, Tiger's recommendation. When we, we had a meeting about a month ago to talk through initiatives that were coming up, uh, for certain buildings and projects that we had. And he recommended getting in front of you all, not during budget meetings when they're four hours long and, you know, can get lost in that. So just a general update and also talking specifically about a couple of buildings and that's why I'm here. So thanks for having me. So I always start off with, uh, the private-public partnership that we have formed because, uh, the more I do this, the more I understand that not everyone gets exactly where that came from. So in nineteen fifty-nine, Susan Dwight Bliss donated forty acres of her estate, uh, to the town of New Canaan and restricted that the, the other portion she gave to the First Presbyterian Church. So that was her house, uh, for the estate. She gave that to the church and she gave the rest of the town for purposes of an arboretum, uh, nature center, bird sanctuaries, uh, passive recreation related purposes or a museum site. That's exactly what the deed says. And so in that first year that it was donated, the town government got together with six private citizens who formed the New Canaan Nature Center Association. That's what I'm the Executive Director of, that nonprofit, and the town made them the designated agent of the town to fulfill the deed. And we've been doing that since nineteen sixty. So that whole agreement was written in a one-page letter in nineteen sixty. That was updated to two and a half pages in nineteen seventy. But every time there's, well, who's, who takes care of what and one of the responsibilities, it does come from that nineteen seventies letter. If you've never read it and you're voting on things about whether money should go or not. I really recommend reading that two-page agreement, uh, because that's where it comes from. Um, and, uh, also with our, our certificate of incorporation outlines, you know, what our goals are and that's to connect people to the natural world in all the ways. Just a brief overview of our finances. Um, you'll notice that big section of our two million dollar budget, that, that blue section, that fifty percent is our preschool. So it is our biggest moneymaker. It's also, uh, you know, for us, it's one of our highest mission-driven programs too, of connecting kids to the natural world and they're out in there every day. I know some of you might have had your children at the nature center. Um, and, um, it's a fantastic program. If you didn't know, it's the first nature-based preschool founded in the country, if you didn't know that.
Okay, point of clarification, that one point nine, that's, that revenue is coming in or how much do you spend? Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Sure. Um, next chunk seventeen percent is our summer camp and our next ten percent is our environmental education programs that we have for field trips and, um, also our after-school program. Dr. Lutzy approached us about three years ago and said that was a big need. So we started that about three years ago and they bused the kids to the nature center, which is, which is a huge, uh, plus for us. The last quarter is special events, fundraisers, annual appeal, that's a, grants. Uh, this is information that's directly asked of us is how much of these programs are New Canaan residents and our preschool, uh, which is very large, is eighty-six percent New Canaan residents. Summer camp of seven hundred and eleven campers that go through last year, ninety percent are New Canaan residents and our after-school is a hundred percent. So of that seventy-five percent of our revenues, uh, mostly New Canaan residents are using those programs. Picture of tops are after-school, getting some birding in. And, uh, bottom pictures, our summer camp, our oldest group, we, we go out all over, uh, and do field trips and, you know, hikes like that.
Bill, that, uh, fifty percent that you highlighted in the previous, does that include all those preschool students, summer camp and after-school? Is all of those?
Fifty percent is just the preschool.
Just the preschool.
Seventeen percent is summer camp.
Okay.
And the after-school would be that in, within that ten percent.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Thank you.
First item, uh, is, that has been on, uh, budget for the last two cycles. Uh, it's never made it to town council because it's been removed before it's gotten there. Um, but just as, uh, for everyone's information, any nature center projects are within the public works budget. Um, so, uh, as I said, Tiger and I, uh, work closely together to talk about different projects that, um, report to us. And then he works into his budget, uh, what, uh, what's important to us. And this has been in there for the last couple of years. Um, this is an interesting building because. The Audubon Society of New Canaan, uh, controlled it until two thousand and fourteen. They had a license with the town of New Canaan and that they dissolved in two thousand and fourteen. So the first time it really came under nature center and town control again was, was pretty recent as far as the history of that building. Two thousand and seventeen was the building's report, uh, that was townwide where they assessed all the buildings and this one was identified to have, you know, serious structural needs. Um, when it, when I, I became Executive Director in two thousand and seventeen and Tiger came and said, do you have funds to help out with this building? At the time, we did not. Um, two thousand and nineteen, the land trusts, uh, was interested in using the building, renovating it and using as their home base. Uh, they ended up not following through with that. And so two thousand and twenty, went back to Tiger and said, we're interested in it. We have a program need and that's when it, uh, went back in the budget, um, for the last couple of years. Um, when it first entered the budget, uh, it had a roof intact and since then, uh, now it looks like this. Um, so it's dramatic. I mean, it's, it doesn't look like a, uh, fantastic place to put a preschool, but as we've, uh, talked with Tiger, um, we really do, like, he does think it's still, um, ren- renovatable.
Wow.
That we can renovate it.
Durable.
Uh, it is also the original laundry house. There is historic value. Um, I don't, you know, that, that's not, my, my purview tonight is to explain that we do have a need. Uh, if, if you're asking what we would want, we would want to see it renovated so that we could, the house, um, expand our choose program, which is our highest demanded program. Um, and I'll outline that in the next slide. Now, when, when we first saw, we said, well, why can't we just, there, there's a lot of red tape of, especially being a town building in a park. It having historical significance. And so we said, can't we just put a new top on it? And the answer, that's where Tiger can speak much more, uh, to that red tape. That's not my area of expertise. But he said renovation is, um, is the best way in his opinion. So, um, that's where, where we are. So. This is what we want to do with this building. We want to expand our choose program. Um, not only would it increase funds for our project and initiatives, we're out of licensable space. Uh, so this came up in the, uh, Board of Finances, can we figure out another place? But we really don't have, oh, any other space that we can license for, uh, our preschool. We tried to do it in the greenhouse and that for several reasons didn't work out. So, um, we have run out of that space and we're looking for more. And as far as just straight numbers for what that would do for our budget, um, all in all, it would increase our revenue, net revenue of, of about seventy thousand dollars. And as far as just straight numbers for what that would do for our budget, all in all, it would increase our revenue, net revenue of about seventy thousand dollars a year. And we just started an application process and we already have twenty kids on the twos waitlist and this building would house sixteen. Now, it wouldn't be, obviously this wouldn't get done by next fall, but you know, this, the, the demand is there. Last year we had forty kids in the twos waitlist. So the reason the twos is so hard is the ratio is lower. It's four to one, not, not ten to one. And so the classes can only be eight kids in a building the size. And so almost all twos programs are only eight children. That's why the demand is so high because there's just not enough two, two spots.
I was gonna wait till you get to end. That's fine.
Sure. I mean, I'm good. Keep going. All right. So the handout that I gave you, the dot I really want to connect is if we make more money, we put more money into the nature center. And so the sheet of paper, they, you have a spreadsheet in front of you outlining one point two million dollars worth of stuff. And that's what we've done in the last five years at the nature center. Question last night, if you make sixty, seventy thousand more dollars, what do you do with it? And this is an example of what we do with it. Not only is capital projects, these are just pictures of all the different stuff that we've done. Just filling in boardwalks throughout the, our wetlands was a quarter million dollars. So in order for us to do that, do you need a copy? You have a copy?
I'm all right. I'm sure it's here.
I got it. Yeah. I'll share. So besides the capital projects that you've seen in the examples, also we've put a lot of ongoing maintenance into the, or into the property. I think it's the only park that has its own full-time grounds and facilities director, just dedicated to the nature center grounds. We also contract out for habitat restoration to one company, a different company we do for just down the driveway, beautifying and keeping that clean and maintaining our gardens. So pub, public works does cut the grass, they plow the roads, do leaf pickup. And anytime that we can't handle something or we don't have the right equipment, we can call public works and they're always very helpful. But we try to maintain it as much as we can and we put a lot of money into it. And so we're averaging about two hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of money annually over the last five years or one point two million dollars total. So that, if you want the full story of all the money that goes into it, public works can, would be able to provide, like the road was paved a couple of years ago. You know, when, when we need a new roof on a building, those are capital projects, the town pays.
Bill, explaining again what the two forty represents.
Between maintenance and our capital projects, that's just the average that we've done over the last five years. So we're averaging about two hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of stuff. So.
Each year or?
Yeah.
So when you say, when you say, when you say contribution, so is this money flowing from?
Everything. That's, this is above our break even and.
I mean, where's the money? Okay, so you, your annual, your revenue for the year was a million two and that was just?
No, the, the revenues are the, what the budget I showed you is, this is, this is what, this is our annual revenues. Anything above our break even by the time we pay our bills. And I just wanted to point out all of the monies that we've put back into the plans and the maintenance. That's all. So it's averaging two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year just for these capital improvements plus the ongoing maintenance. And one point two million is the total over five years and the itemized there. So are there any questions just about what I've said so far about Audubon House? I mean, it will come up again through the budget cycle. All we want to do really is express that we have a need. We would be able to use the building. This is what we want to do with it. And then it's, it's in town's hands because you all own the buildings and you own the property and we just own the computers and the desk, you know, the stuff inside. So. Yeah.
I was just gonna say, I think the nature center was originally on one of the ARPA requests. Why did it go away? Like, I mean, it looks like.
We, we had a, we had an ARPA award that went to grounds maintenance. So that's.
Now, this is specifically for.
For the preschool.
Yeah.
Oh, you've had dredging.
Oh, I, I mean, so there's, there were a lot of iterations of ideas for the ARPA, but what our final request was, was, and I believe the award was sixty-seven thousand dollars that went to grounds maintenance. That's, that's my memory. We, during the process, we said we could, I, I came to a meeting here and they said, what would you do? And I gave a whole bunch of things that we could do with the money and I think that's where.
I think it made the matrix at one, you know, the grid.
Yeah.
I mean, and I think there's still money. It's just a, an idea. I think there's still ARPA funds, so something.
Again, if, if that is, if that's available and the town bodies vote to put it towards that, we would be very supportive. Just to mention also, we did work with Greg Riley to apply for a grant through the state and we'll find out in January. So we might come back in January saying, we just got four hundred thousand dollars for the building. Don't worry about it. But let's not, I don't want to count on that, but we do explore, every time something like this happens, we explore all of our options. And we work with Tiger very closely and public works to say, what can we do? And we're very open to all those discussions. Board of Finance came back last night and said, you know, when it comes to budget cycle, lay out the different options so that we have something to, something to work with. But my point is the, the roofs caved in and either needs to be renovated or taken down. I mean, that's, that's where we are. I don't think it's particularly safe building to be resting.
Sounds like that's an immediate need that needs to be addressed.
I think so.
In terms of your twos program, how, or your preschool program, I should say, there's, is it twos and it's just preschool, right? It's.
Twos, threes, fours, and then fives are going to our pre-k years.
Got it. And how long is that program during the day, in a day?
Depends on the age group. Twos are there for two and a half hours in the morning. Twos don't last in the afternoon because it's nap time.
And then the other reason I'm asking is because I have heard quite a few people in need. There's a need for, you know, preschool and for care, I guess, for kids.
Yeah.
Not just for a few hours, but actually like an all-day program. And that's what I was just curious about. If that is a potential.
We have, we have been asked if we would consider doing full daycare. Daycare and preschool, they're very similar, but daycare is a, is a whole nother. It's a really hard thing to run because you have to do it year-round. You don't get to take all the vacations and breaks and it is, you know, seven thirty to five thirty. So that is something that today, I mean, I've asked our preschool director if they're interested in expanding that and whether that'd be smart and we're not there.
You're not there yet. Okay.
It's a different licensing scheme, isn't it? I mean, there's a lot of.
It's a lot of reasons.
You can incorporate, I, I mean, I've experienced with like, yeah, with, with, with camp and with, with like Montessori's. They incorporate learning with the daycare and so it's possible, but it's, it's.
Education is a huge part of daycare.
It's different. It is different.
Why the daycare doesn't have.
Yeah.
Educate, like it is an educational program.
It's different though.
It's set up very different.
Yeah.
We like how our business is set up and our organization and, you know, we don't, we, we're not ready to make a major shift like.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Bill, is the twos program or any of the programs just in the morning or do you provide them in the afternoon as well?
We don't do any afternoons. We dropped that. I don't know what years ago, but especially for those younger ages, they all go home and it's, again, nap time. And, and so the demand for afternoon was very, very low unless you do, you have to get cots and you have to get all the thing and then you do nap time in the school program. But again, that's kind of going more into the daycare world.
Bill?
Yes.
Repeat, how many kids are, would be in this two, twos program? How many kids can they have?
There'd be Monday, Wednesday, Friday would be eight kids and Tuesday, Thursday.
Seventy thousand and additional revenue? Okay.
Yeah. And there were also our little explorers, which is like a mommy-me program. It doesn't have a home. We kind of move them around and that would be a perfect home for them. And that's about twenty thousand dollars.
Could you?
Children in the.
That's about forty-five. Hold on, I have a.
Ah, there you go.
Yeah. I made this for a reason.
Is, have you envisioned, would there be any uses for, I, I don't know what time of day the twos programs, when you decide that? Yeah. What, is there a use for it in the afternoon?
Not currently.
But could there be the potential for some after?
Well, the after, after school, we, we do extended days with all of our preschool programs and lunch bunches and they're all in, in other rooms right now. And we have enough of those rooms to fill that.
Okay. Anything else, Bill?
Well, I haven't even gotten to the greenhouse yet. So if you want to, thanks for the, thanks for the poke. The greenhouse, the roof has not fallen in, so it's, we're not, we're not quite had diarrhea. Yeah.
It has a roof.
It has a roof, so that's, that's a plus. It does, it does leak a little bit, but that's.
Are the plants in there?
There are a few plants. Our current problems in our greenhouse, and this is something that we are going to come to town eventually now, so we're putting it in everyone's head. All the temperature regulation systems in that building have failed. We cannot actually have a growing program because it gets a hundred and ten degrees in the summer and we can't control that. The only thing we can grow is succulents, which we do. And we have a wonderful succulent farm in there because that's the only thing we can grow. It's laid out in a very strange way, so we can't utilize it for event space or meeting space or other uses that we have. So there are ways in which we would love to see this building renovated. There are a few things that we talked with Tiger about possibly doing now. One is this ramp was built before ADA laws were in place. So it's a lovely ramp. It's not ADA compliant. So the building is not ADA compliant. So that ramp would either have to be rebuilt or if you take the second floor and make it storage only, which we're very open to, because we don't utilize it. You can do away with that ramp and not have to put an elevator in the building. Those are the types of discussions we have with public works to make these projects a little bit more reasonable. There's a few other things like taking this middle staircase out and we had to have to fill in, there's two steps down right underneath it. That's what makes the building not ADA compliant. So we're looking at making some of those changes just in the meantime, while we figure out the rest, just to make it compliant and a little bit more usable for us. It's built nineteen eighty-two and there hasn't been any major maintenance done except for a couple of insurance claims and some pipes first. But it's time, it, it needs some, it needs some love in order to have a future. What we ultimately envision in there is, I'm sure you're familiar with our pollinator pathway group. If you're not, that involves public works of New Canaan, the Conservation Commission, Nature Center Land Trust, Planet New Canaan, the Library, Grace Farms, Beautification League, Garden Club, they're all part of this. We meet regularly and we, we do education initiatives around this. The Greenwich Land Trust has a very robust native seed program that they harvest all of them locally. They propagate them. That's what I envision here is inviting all those groups to use the space for that and sending all these wonderful native plants out into the town. So that, that's my vision of it, is making it a community greenhouse with all these groups and having a really useful purpose. And then if we open it up a little bit, we can use it more. So we anticipate a capital campaign on our end. When it comes to what our ask is of the town is when it comes to the bare bones of buildings. So that's how typically how it works is if there's HVAC work or a roof or something like that, that's where we ask town to take care of the bare bones. And then we come in with the rest. So that's, that's, we'll come down the pipeline at some point. It's very, it's very high on our board's list to solve that problem. And we're, now, now you know that we're going to be asking at some point for town to contribute and so on.
Has Greg looked at this at all for any sort of sustainability?
He has.
Hydroponic grants?
You know, he, Greg, about twice a year is like, what do you got? And he comes, he's coming by next week.
Great.
Do a tour, look at all the buildings and, you know, so again, we're always exploring other options. We like grant money, so we're happy, happy to look for it.
Do you use the classroom space that's in the greenhouse?
Can't license that classroom space for a lot of reasons, but we use the summer camp. It does qualify. So we use a summer camp room. Our mommy and me program, our little explorers in there during the school year now, we can't have there in the summer because it's a little hot in that.
One tends to hot?
A little, but not for the cacti that are in there. So it's a greenhouse. Again, it's, it's not, it's not falling over. I need some love and we're, we're working on it. So.
Yeah. And just a suggestion, I know, the grant money, I, I wasn't kidding. Hydroponics is a really hot area and hot meaning. Not that kind of hot, but there might be definitely grant money there. So it's just, just a thought.
More questions?
That is.
Going over the ten minutes, but thank you all.
It's all right. Thank you very much, Bill.
Great presentation.
All right. Next up, item number six on the agenda. So budget process discussion of the upcoming budget development schedule on the process. And the floor is yours. Same job. Ten minutes, ten minutes.
You have a little gone, take over.
Everyone.
Hi.
So Deanna kind of gave an overview of where we are right now. I guess I can kind of bring you up to speed of how we got to where we are. In early October, I sent out the templates, all the departments asking for their operating budgets, capital budgets, their updated kind of goals and narratives for the year as well as their performance metrics for the previous years. They had until Thanksgiving-ish, we started our meetings with Board for Selectman and Director of HR Tucker and myself, going with each of the departments in and out. As it gets operating budget going really line by line through the budget. It's, you know, it's a long process. It's a really educational process for, I think, everyone. We see what's supposed to be going into each line, what historically has come out of each line. And it just kind of, I think every year just gets the budget a little tighter, a little more potensive and just kind of gets rid of unnecessary lines and combines them into whatever. And so we're kind of coming up to the end of that process. We have maybe one or two more meetings and then we'll have hopefully a budget put together for a packet for the Board of Selectmen.
Do you anticipate the timing for the presentations of the Board of Selectmen?
I think they start in January sixteen.
Those meetings are all up there, January, I think you're right, January sixteenth, and then they meet through January and then it goes to Board of Finance. But those meetings are all. It would be, it would be great. Just, that's a really good segue to, for any of you to follow along if you want. I mean, you can always go back and listen to the recording or join on Zoom, join us.
Yeah, actually that's, thank you for reminding me, Tucker. And I'll, we'll have more discussion on this in the near future. But, you know, as, as you all know, I think you could tell I'm trying to tighten things up and move things along, make them a lot more efficient. Our budget process and those who've been through a few of them know that it's a long process. It's cumbersome. It's tedious. Even before it gets to us. And, you know, our meetings, especially in March, when we have two meetings a week and I like, you know, bunker buster, three and a half hour things, I'm looking to eliminate that type of a long, long process. And when I say eliminate, meaning severely truncating it. And I've actually spoke to several of the department heads already and they're highly receptive to moving things along in, in a little bit of a different way. Whereas instead of having the department heads come to us, you know, giving their presentation literally for the fifth time and especially with the Board of Ed, I mean, it's like, you know, an endurance test with, you know, phalanx of, of the board, you know, of Dr. Lutzey and his, his, you know, C-suite sitting there, you know, after a long day and waiting. And then they have to give that presentation and then they come back for another one. I don't think it's particularly productive for us as a body. I think it's kind of a little cruel and unusual for the department heads to, you know, give a same presentation like a fifth time. I think it's incumbent upon all of us to really do our homework prior to us commencing our view of the budget because it has been so scrubbed and examined, you know, I, I, you know, I'll, I'll, you know, I'm like, I'm like a nerd. I have a long commute, so I put it onto my car and I listen to, you know, the Board of Finance presentation and I try to really understand what the asks are. So I show up and then if I have any questions, I ask them rather than sit, you know, have Dr. Lutzey give, you know, his presentation. And then for the first time say, well, what about this? What about this? So I, I want us all to really think hard about how we can allocate our time in January and February is really understand what these budgets are because my, I really anticipate, like when a tiger comes up, says, you know, we'll give him, you know, I'll give him fifteen minutes. Give me your top line, what you think we need to know because we've heard it already. And then just straight to questions. And honestly, if there are none, then let's move it along. If you guys are all in agreement, I can't dictate that. I just hope that you could see the value in that. So now that, like I said, almost all of us have been through the budget process several times and I think we all see room for improvement here. And for our new members, you know, I, I, I wanted to come into a new process where it's much more laser focused on us asking any questions that we may have. And the other thing too, and all the department heads that I spoke to said the same thing. Tiger said it, Dr. Lutzey said it. Police chief, we have the ability to send questions into the department heads at any time. They are hyper-responsive and receptive to any questions that we have. So let's utilize that ability. And if we are seeing a presentation to the Board of Selectmen or to the Board of Finance or we're, and we're getting, you know, documents uploaded to our tablets, if we have a particular question, shoot it over to Tiger. Tiger is super responsive. You know, Dr. Lutzey and his crew will hundred percent respond to it. And in fact. And in fact, Dr. Lutzey said he would welcome questions from us at any time on the budget process. Any way to just narrow this, this, you know, monster, you know, effort to a much more fine point at the very end when it comes to us. So to the extent you could, you know, cogitate and chew on that, I'd appreciate it.
Kind of a suggestion, I think you made some really good point, but I, I still agree it's cruel and unusual punishment to have them just constantly be repeating the same thing over and over again. I wonder, I mean, these things are recorded. Would it make sense, you mentioned this, like we should all be doing this, but just to have us commit and we could all at least watch the first presentation. I, I do think though, sending in questions separately sometimes of one person's question will spur another one. I wonder if there is, it's almost you make it two sessions, one where you have the original presentation. We gather questions and then maybe like the questions are all asked.
That's what we do for more of that.
Yeah, what you've done in the past is you can send your questions to the committee people that are responsible for that department. And they correlate all those questions, all three of you asked the question and then they send them out and get the answer.
I'm just hearing other people's questions or seeing that it's going to spur something on. So that's the only thing that I was missing a little bit from that, when it's, if it's separate, that's all.
Can I, can you copy the whole town council when you ask somebody a question?
All of you don't have a discussion. Just can't, then you can't come back and say, well, what about that? Because then you're.
Yep, sorry. So on our tablets, we only see town council documents and it would be helpful when the Board of Finance is meeting, we know what they're talking about. Or Board of. This has been an ongoing problem where we're asked to, to sit through the meetings, but we don't have the paperwork and are unable to formulate some of the issues that are coming up, because the information is not available. So if that's the way we're going to go, then the information given to the Board of Finance has to be given to us and it can be updated as the Board of Finance budget is updated.
Would this be helpful if, one of the things that we've been doing for Board of Selectmen, they seem to have a lot more in the way of documents, but is when we post the agenda, we also post a public packet that is all of the documents, so for the public. They don't have, obviously have tablets, so the public can go on a website and all the documents that are on the tablets are also available in the public packet. We could do the same for town council and Board of Finance, so that you could just access on that.
If those are the documents that are going to be presented and worked on, then yes, absolutely. Great idea. Because here it's organized by meeting date, so we know where to go, town council folder. But you're saying this would be somewhere different.
It would be on the agenda page on the website, right? Just like.
But I wouldn't want it on the, it has to be in our tablets.
Well, you can, you can access it on your tablets just by going to the website.
You're saying OneDrive. No, it's, it's not the same.
So you want them downloaded on.
Download, download onto the tablet. Like an access to the folder. Yes, it could be your folders as Board of Finance.
Yeah.
Let me talk to IT.
I just have a question though, in terms of that, because I, that's what you're saying, because you want to be able to access it.
Right.
Honestly, if it's, if it's housed somewhere, you were, you constantly have the ability to access it. Is it because you want to print it out?
It's, it's a couple of things, it's because you want to print it out, but you're not always able to go to the website. And the website is another conversation. It becomes too cumbersome, you cannot get to all the documents at once. And then you have no way to refer to them unless you go back to it. And if it was an updated version, you may not have the documents that you were working with before. And it wouldn't, I'm not sure it would be organized the way the OneDrive is.
It's organized by date. The way we do it for Selectmen is like the agenda for December fifth. The agenda was there. And then you'll see minutes and things like that. And then there's public documentation and that's everything that's on all the documents that they're going to be looking at during the meeting are there for the public. That's how the press gets access to all of the documents. And it's available twenty-four seven, anybody who has access to the web can get it. If you didn't have your tablet, but we'll, we'll, I mean, I can talk to IT and figure.
If they could just turn on the Board of Finance, give us permission to see that folder. I just, I don't, is there anything we shouldn't see?
No, no, no. My company, I mean, this is literally what my company does when we have like different departments and we're all doing, there's one folder with all of the different departments' budgets in it that you can access at once. So it's, you're not trying to go to millions of different things. But it's, I mean, it's on the website, right? It's, it's housed in one place, it's not housed on our computers, because it's a lot of stuff, right? But it's, but it's like planning folder for twenty twenty-four. It's very easy, it's very accessible, organized, like I guess what I'm saying, I'm trying, I'm trying to get to your solution without adding a lot of extra work of like downloading, you know what I mean?
I think it's just a permission, a central place on the folder.
But I'm also thinking about the public, I mean, the public should have access to all of those as well.
Sometimes I can't access the shared drive, so it would be, it's helpful to know that it's also on the website.
I think there's a solid, I think there's like a solid out there that, that is, that is practice, that works pretty well, that we might learn from.
So none of this is going to count against your ten minutes.
All right, let me, I'll look into it.
Mike, just, just to clarify, so we would still have the meetings with the department heads and the town council, but you're just hoping they could be shorter, because you're not going to make them go through.
Correct, that's exactly right.
I might just, just so you know, my, my sense is that in the case of Dr. Lutzey, he feels that he can, his case will be appreciated more if he makes some kind of a presentation.
Oh yeah, that's his option. Right, oh, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
I chatted with him and whatever he feels he needs, what he appreciates the effort to try to, you know, kind of tighten things off, that's all.
But I'm, I'm all for following this earlier in the process, when other boards consider it.
It might be helpful too for the subcommittee heads, when our committees are formed and functioning, to come back at our town council and say, you know, we met with Parks and Racker, Department of Public Works, here are this top five capital projects and the other things about the budget that you should know. And just flag that, that, that's how our subcommittees, I feel like, in my opinion, could work to the benefit of us. Just to flag those sort of major budgetary issues, so that it's not like a fifty-page PowerPoint where we're trying to figure out what the priorities are.
Divide and conquer.
That should come out as those dividing.
I'm really happy you mentioned that. I was going to raise this a little later about our committee assignments, but that's exactly what I want our committees to be, you know, far more proactive, especially in the budget season, that whatever chair you are on, whatever committee, you really do have an obligation to listen to the department head presentations, get access, review their budgets. And in our committee reports, I really, I do want, hey, they met, like this is what Tiger wants. This is what was discussed here, this is what was discussed, whatever. But I want our committees to be a lot more proactive in terms of interfacing with the departments in the early part of the, throughout the budget season. So like in a, you know, a January, our January meeting, like we should have committee reports saying, hey, I heard the Board of Selectmen discussion and here are some issues on my committee. And so it's divide and conquer and we have a far more robust use of our committee. So we said, I think it's absolutely.
All of this is lost.
Moving along, so are we done with the budget process? Anything else? Oh wait, item number seven, financial update. Financial and budget update, review and discussion of your debate financials. What was yours?
Hello, in front of you and on your tablets, there are the year-to-date financials as of November thirtieth. You should also have just a short list of highlights. But I will quickly run through them. So this is just shot at the fifty percent mark of the year. And the overall revenues are at fifty-four percent, fifty-four and a half percent for eighty-seven point three million. The overall revenues are exceeding last year's base by two point nine percent and have a notable increase of three hundred thousand in share last year. That's, sorry, that of course is led by tax collections. Your tax collections are at fifty-five point four three percent or eighty-three point two million. Prior year tax collections are lagging behind a little bit, especially from last year at twenty-four percent or seventy-two thousand. Down to building permits, building permits at the fifty percent mark are just about fifty percent through what was planned for the budget, which was eight hundred and fifty thousand, so we're at four hundred and thirty thousand. This also marks kind of the end of the first month that we've gone through using open, new software that Land Use Health and Building have put together as a one-stop shop for all their needs. On to conveyance, conveyance fees, they're at forty-five point six percent or six hundred and eighty-four thousand. Trending downwards from last year, which was kind of expected, but trending on with what we had planned for the one point five billion budget for FY twenty-four. Down to interest on investments are at sixty. Yes, parking, you're right. All right.
That's the one that needs an explanation.
So parking, parking is at twenty-eight point four percent. But when you dig into the details of parking, the revenue from meters and tickets are on track, about fifty percent of what was budgeted. But when you look at the parking permits, they have a bit of a delay in where they are. Tucker can probably speak to the timing issue a little bit.
We, we extended the parking permit renewal period for two months because of the shutdown last summer. We just didn't, you know, we wanted to give everyone two months more time to make those decisions. And since then, the parking permit renewals have gone out and they had November thirtieth to return. And remember, we had two lists, we had a priority list, anybody that had a parking perm, a lumberyard permit was allowed to put their permit on hold for two years during COVID to decide if they not lose their space. So there's the priority list and then the regular renewals. We sent out the renewals by email. We got kind of a lackluster response. So what we decided to do in response to that was because some people said it went into junk, you know, that kind of thing. Is we actually went and sent letters, physical mailers, anybody that hadn't responded, telling them they had till December twenty-eighth in-house, not mailed by, in-house by December twenty-eighth. The best thing that she did was she actually went out and started ticketing cars that are there that haven't renewed. And then when they come in to say, wait, 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 she voids the ticket and they sign it. So that's working nice. So that number, that number should really come up over the now, the next, the next time you hear an update.
How many non-renewals are we, just generally, is it?
It's, she, she's not sure, only because she only got about fifty percent of a response. The people that are really struggling are the ones who just, they waited forever to get that lumberyard permit. They're not going in as much and now there's so many more daily options between boxcar and all of that. So she's going to have a fuller picture at their next Parking Commission meeting in January.
Do we know?
What's the waitlist?
Well, that's the problem, the waitlist is way down. I mean, at one point it was up to like twelve hundred, I think it's now still like three, four hundred on the list, but that's, she's working through that as, as she can open up spots, she's.
Do you know what the capacity is at this point?
Oh, I don't know. I mean, you mean what the capacity are in the lots? Well, remember, we double and triple cell. And on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the lots are fairly full, but on Mondays and Fridays.
Right, but with that in, in place, are we at fifty percent, seventy-five percent, ninety percent?
You mean in terms of utilization?
Yeah.
On Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, we're probably ninety percent, Mondays and Fridays, we're probably fifty percent.
Okay.
So on to interest on investments, that is sitting right now at sixty-five percent or five hundred and eighty-six thousand. This number was rerun today and that's at just over seven hundred thousand right now. So it's probably closer to seventy, seventy-five percent of the nine hundred thousand that was budgeted. Obviously, I'm par to far exceed the nine hundred thousand, hopefully point two five-ish million, hopefully, by the end of the year. Be a good estimate. Are there any questions on the revenue?
What is tipping fees?
Garbage hauls.
Can I just ask one quick question? Do you ever break out parking by lots versus meter? Revenue.
Lots versus meters.
I mean.
The meters are at the lots or do you mean different?
Well, like the ones where you get a permit, the parking for the train versus shopping, people paying.
So if you go to, I think it's like the second to last page. Yep, the second to last page towards the top. There's the part of total and every thousand meters, they pass the permits, boxcars.
Okay, good.
And that's how you can see parking meters, it's pretty much on point. And as tickets are also at around forty, forty-one percent or so.
Great, thank you.
Yep. All right. So on to the expenditures, expenditures are at thirty-six point seven nine percent or fifty-eight point four million. I can say that compared to last year at the same exact point, the only difference is about a third of a percent from last year's pace, so we're pretty much on target.
Anything stick out in particular, are we good in most of the categories, we're absolutely hitting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think anything is jumping out.
Nothing's jumping out right now. Thank you.
Any else? Questions, everybody? Great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, item number eight, adoption of the audited financial statements. Approval of a request to consider the recommendation of the audit committee to accept the audited financial statements. Fifteen minutes for Bill Carr and Ann Kelly. Ned Kang.
Thank you. Chuck Jacobson. What I said. So I'll start off, okay, and then highlight some of the items in the numbers, so to speak. Where you have the projection, a lot of handouts on your, on your iPad.
And it's behind you too, so we have our script.
Yeah. So this is for the committee members, we have one open position. Ned Kang is a rock choir, I'm not here with us tonight. Next page would be just some of the highlights during the year. We've had six meetings and then there were numerous other activities, including readings. The entire report that you have in front of you is everywhere in those places. The two thousand and twenty-three, you know, financial statements. There are a couple of areas focused, subscription, IT agreements, pension, an OBIT, long-term liabilities, the MDNA, which is really well done, explains, I think, pretty well, some of the important changes in the financial statements, so the lease of subscription, the cybersecurity process. At the end of the day, there's a clean opinion. It was good. In the report from PKF, which is the auditor, there are no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies. If there was a material weakness or significant deficiency, that would be a problem. And we have not had a significant deficiency or material weakness for probably about nine years now. Way back when, nine or ten years ago, we had quite a number of those, but that's, that's behind us. Through that period of time, there's a number of different CFOs and I think there's been progress for, into the CFOs to make improvements. So the Audit Committee last night met with the Finance Committee. And last night, we were, we said we were recommending the financial statement, save one item, which we were still wrestling to the ground. We're still wrestling that item to the ground, but it's not material enough from a disclosure standpoint, so we've actually taken the disclosure out. So we are actually recommending to the town council that, you know, that you prove and sign and issue the financial statements, that's our recommendation after a thorough review. The just a couple of other items on the next page. We've, we might bring this up because it's been a question of a lot of town council in prior years, you know, are we going to rotate the audit firm that actually does the audit PKF? And it's our recommendation that we go out, you know, working with town management to solicit bids as to who else might come in, there's about three firms. PKF, CLA, which is a predecessor, the firm that emerged, it was Blue Security, and then RSTM. Not a lot of firms that do towns of our size, there were some other firms out there, but they're relatively small. The four largest or the six largest accounting firms really do not do towns of our size. And then we'll also, we'll send the RFP out probably at the end of December. Also, we established an internal audit function years ago. That was working very well and there were two events that sort of knocked that off track. One was that the name of the firm was Acume, the two principals that did all work, both passed away. Unrelated matters, unrelated to the town was very, very sad situation. Then at that same time, COVID hit, it was pretty hard to do the internal audit remotely, particularly for a new firm. So we sort of suspended that activity. And we will be going out on our, on internal audit services, which is really very, very important, very critical for us to do. Listed under the subject of internal audit services is, is a list of the number of areas, a itemization of the number of areas that the internal audits have looked at over that four or five year period. And I would say that in each of those areas, there were substantive control weaknesses or substantive things that we had fixed. And they were all fixed. And they were all fixed without a lot of fanfare and a lot of hoopla. Some of them were in town, some of them were in the board of education. And I think that process worked very well. Given the current reassessment process that we're talking about right now, just to give you a sense, one of the things we looked at was the board of assessors and the assessment process. The documentation that stood behind both of those that was reported. And we also looked at who had a reassessment. Were any of those people in positions of significance in the town? And if so, did they get a reassessment system with everybody else involved? So, you know, that's a, a good process. And I would say there were some substantive changes that were made in those areas. And, and that's best done hands down by independent audit function, internal audit function opposed to the outside orders. Um, working with Ann, she and her team, probably maybe we'll help Greg Riley, we'll draft those and those that are out here in short order, we're talking about next week. And then there'll be a process for us to decide who the internal audit will be and who the external audit will be. Could be the same firm, might be somebody different. And at the end of the day, while everybody will have a chance to provide input, since they are independent order functions, that should be the decision of the audit committee at that particular point in time. Depending on when that decision is made and depends very much on who is actually making that decision, whether it's these guys on the audit committee or some other people on the audit committee. Um, there's opportunities for improvement. Um, this is Ann's third year, right? Second, going into the year. Well, second year, right? You were first year, yep, second cycle, right? So, you know, looking at the year in closing process and then we had some reporting suggestions. Then there's always that, um, shared service opportunity between the board of education and the town. I think that's on the list because it's put that one on the list, but I probably don't think that would get accomplished in the next year or two. I think that's not a longer term aspiration, which is probably appropriate. And then, um, some other things that we had taken a look at from the report card standpoint. And they said there were no material weaknesses and no significant efficiencies. There's probably not as many suggestions for areas of improvement or benchmarking against other towns from the, in, from the current external orders that we would like. And so I think that's one of the things that we'll be focusing on in the RFP process that goes out. The communication between the town and the board of education is excellent. Um, I think that, uh, we have an excellent relationship with Brian and when we want to focus on a particular area, Brian and his team, I don't mean just to say him. And so that, that works, uh, very well. And across PKF, not only what is the town, but also the board of education, which is part of the town. And all of that's in the numbers that you see in front of you. And I think, um, just a big thank you to, um, Deanna and Kevin. You know, certainly Ann, Ryan, the superintendent, Sean, who's just on his team. PKF, and then there were lots of other people on, um, everybody's staff who really worked pretty well, including the audit committee. A lot of good hard work on, on their part, and predecessors as well. So it is excellent cross-functional cooperation. That's it. Answer any questions? Otherwise, we recommend you approve the financial statements as presented to you, as prepared by the town.
Questions, anybody? Um, I have a question, but you mentioned earlier, um, it's a best practice to rotate audit firms. Can you comment a little bit more on that and your general, um, overall assessment of, uh, PKF's performance? Care to comment on that?
Yeah. I think, um, first of all, um, the, the bidding process, um, in general, is a, is a good thing for towns to do.
Right.
In the public sector, I'm not, yeah, I, I'm not so sure rotating firms is important as it is in the, you know, in the uh, like the, the public companies, you know, listed companies opposed to towns. I think it's more important with a town. One of the problems you have is that the accounting profession has a shortage of people coming into it. So there's a drought of talent coming into the accounting profession. For the big firms and the medium-sized firms, that's a real problem for small firms. Uh, I think that we could, um, the other thing is we pay them about a hundred thousand dollars. A little bit less than that. It's really not a lot of money for the amount of, for the, for the assignment that they have. And a disproportionate amount of that money is spent on the preparation of the financial statements and preparation of the document that you have in front of you. And very little of that money is spent on the controls and checks and balances that are really so important to you and so important against the system, right? And that's why the internal audit part is so, that's why the internal audit function is so important. You know, um, I would think, the one way of looking at PKF would say, well, you know, I did an audit, we got through, we don't have any material leaks or two. But, um, I, I'm used to more constructive suggestions for improvement and being out in front of that a little bit. And, um, sometimes, uh, the process of doing RFP, you can, you can achieve that and maintain the same firm. And sometimes you actually have to switch firms. So, you know, I would say as far as I was concerned, PKF would have as equal chance as every other firm. But in order, you know, unless somebody didn't demonstrate, unless there were, were other firms that couldn't demonstrate that they were good. But I think PKF, um, would have to demonstrate for me, as one person, that they could have some more constructive suggestions and ways for improvement that at least I haven't seen at this particular point in time, if I was to recommend to retain a going forward. So I've done a quality audit, but I don't think that extra is in there that, yeah.
And we.
Used to be, but it's not today.
So let's. So in developments of the new, of the RFP, can we address any of these concerns that we just outlined?
We guess, absolutely, yeah.
And are, that's more important question. Are we addressing these types of concerns that you have? There's more constructive advice? Are we, you know, juicing up the hundred thousand dollars more? Because it kind of sounds like PKF was a little bit limited in terms of what it was doing for whatever reasons. Um, so I, I would like to know if that can get, you know, addressed in the RFP.
Well, we, we, we would put that in RFP. I would think one of the things I would ask for that we haven't asked for, but maybe we should have, is I would ask for them to, you know, when I, I mean, I was an auditor for a long period of time. When I finished, I mean, I always, every year left the client I served with a letter of things that we did to differentiate ourselves, differentiate ourselves in a positive way. And I think that's one of the things I ever looked for, whatever firm, you know, what, okay, you paid a hundred thousand dollars. What have you done besides the statutory requirement to sign off on the report? And there should be some. I'm not suggesting that the people aren't good people, you know, and, uh, if they were to do a special assignment, they could do it, possibly do it very well. It's just the engagement of, you know, delivering the audit, we can get a little bit more on that.
I think that's important. I mean, you know, it's become a little bit a commodity in terms of accounting. Barcom gobbling up a lot of people in Long Island, KPMG. Uh, so just making sure that we have that personal feel and touch and then having it outlined because, you know, with all the firms merging, that's kind of like, uh, banking. Um, you want to make sure that the person, the people that we're dealing with is, is clearly defined of what our expectations are and that we have that intimate personal relationship.
Yeah, it's a good way of putting it. Clearly define our expectation, they're clearly defining the appearing that they need to do. And, and, and then also asking, well, how much would that cost us?
Yeah.
They might say it's gonna cost us ten thousand dollars more or some other number, but then, you know, we're getting the value added.
Yeah, so it's not a commodity. We're looking for value add. Um, and what happens is that accounts become, uh, you know, a commodity and then hey, who's the cheapest? And then I'm gonna go with you and as long as you could check the box, uh, and say, this is what we're receiving. Uh, so I, I think that those are very valid and excellent points.
And you all have that with all your service providers at your own home, right? People you've had for ten or fifteen years, you've got a sort of, okay, you've been around for a long time, you know, that don't take me for granted.
Yeah, exactly. And, uh, you know.
It's not a criticism of them.
It's not at all. I, I think it's, I, I think they setting the clear expectations for everyone, then we need to define success, right? So that, hey, this is what we're expecting, not just, okay, check the box, I got this type of level of reporting and now I'm good here. Is that we want that engagement and that personal intimacy.
And one of the reasons the, um, the very largest firms of the next year, I'm probably the tier under that, because these firms are pretty small to deal with. One of the reasons they don't do town, the economics are just not there.
Of course.
Right.
I'd just like to, to add that it is my understanding in the Connecticut statutes, it requires the municipality to go out to bid every, the five or six years for internal auditors. So it's not up to us. I mean, we have to follow the statutes.
But, but it's, um, probably been, but, you know, sometimes they can be an extenuating, especially COVID and, you know.
Yes.
Last year we would, I think we probably told the town council when the prior CFO was here that we were, you know, getting ready to go out for bid. And then we changed CFOs. That was absolutely a long time to change order. Yeah. And I want to be clear, one thing is that, um, I, you know, I said that the, um, decision really of selecting the internal and the external order should be with the audit committee. I think that's the way it's been written in our charter. And I think that's the way it is in practice. That's important because they need to be independently. Sometimes people say, can you have somebody be an internal auditor working for the town? Well, who are they gonna report to and are they really independent? And it's not a criticism, anybody in town, that just is independent audit function in every big company in the world. The decision made by the audit committee, you know, but it's done in collaboration with the CFO. You couldn't hire an auditor without getting the input from the CFO, you know, this could work, you know, just the people work with RT and so on, and we're, we're under the policies as well. Sorry.
Sure, really good question. So it seems like this is very, very well-run organization in general, but I, the opportunities that you kind of outlined, I think are pretty interesting. Or do you see any challenges being able to pursue some of these ideas that's within the small group? Are there any challenges that you see?
Challenges in terms of?
In terms of evaluating them, getting the small group together? Do you see any, um, is there a plan to, to follow through with, looking at these opportunities?
You know, in, um, I think that, that's, as we now wrap up the audit, that's one thing we've really got to sit down with Ann to, to really talk about. Um, because last year, you know, surviving last year, getting through last year was, was important. And, and, you know, I'm not trying to minimize how much, how hard that was, right? Uh, Ann's commitment with everybody was, uh, we'll get this thing filed in December if we got that done.
Yeah.
You know, that's, you know, that's not easy. So now, you know, we've been talking about some of these things and it suggests we have a working group. You know, it's, um, a closed year and closing cycle. We're, we're as, we're as good or equal to a hun- a hundred and fifty-nine of the town, a hundred and sixty town in a closing cycle. Takes six months for towns to close. It takes Oracle, when the boards are on, eight days. And, and, you know, so that, you know, it's different. So I'm just saying, I, I think we're, we're doing, we're, we're no worse than anybody else. I'm not suggesting the fact that probably a lot of. Probably better than most. Real question is, can we be better? Why would we want to get it done early? Only just so you, I mean, this, I'm sure this reports are paying the neck of the hand of our team to get done. And I'm sure we're a pain in the neck to, to work for that time, and that's not their choice. So the answer is there are opportunities and we would be, you know, and we have, we have a few years. We over the years have had some work to do.
The only reason I'm asking is if there's something we can do to help, um, facilitate that, because it sounds like there's some opportunities we can look at. And, and that's all I was asking. Any challenges, something we can help you?
The only one would be in, uh, shared services, but I think that's a, you know, with the board of education and that, so. I, I, I want to be careful, not pushing that out.
Definitely any one thing. I was just thinking there's a bunch of opportunities, just being able to evaluate them.
I think, um, I talked to Deanna a little bit with, uh, you know, some first of the, you know, I think we have one. You know, I think we have a way of really moving forward.
Process of doing it, right?
But if we didn't, we wouldn't come back and, and talk.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions?
Yeah. So, um, I did give you some slides. Mostly the, the main slide that most people look at or the board of finances looking at was the last one because that's the bottom line. But it, it's, let me, I'll back up to those. We, our financials are done in three different methods, proprietary, modified fees and full of pool. So, and it's government-wide and it's proprietary. So we have all these different reports somewhere. So it gets confusing when you look at a fund balance at the very back and you say thirty-five million dollars is the fund balance. Well, that's not the general fund that you know, when you set the budget, that's not that, that's going as well. So, um, that's, that's the main one that the board of finance questions were coming in. Why did that block? Because we have a government-wide, like, uh, reporting versus general fund. Um, so if there was any particular questions, because I, I don't want to pour into all the weeds in it, but I just wanted to explain that last slide because, uh, that's the one that fluctuates based on capital projects. It's based on whether we bond or not. So we either have revenue coming in or we don't. And that shows that fluctuation on it, but it has, it doesn't have a major effect on the general.
Um, what we call the general.
Yeah, what you call the general.
Generally think of as the general.
Because that's what you're voting, that's what you're mainly voting on.
Yeah.
So, um, but what you get here is all our funds. We've, you know, probably thirty-plus funds, twenty-five, thirty funds that'll all get combined together. What I also attached was, um, the milestones or the accomplishments of the finance department for the last year. Phil had said, last year was a very, very challenging year, and so was this year for finance on the things that we needed to do. Some of the main things that we did was, um, we closed out three hundred and fifty-one projects with the help of DPW and Board of Ed, and we reassigned those funds to uh, any excess funds to other fund. Um, we closed out seven funds that were no longer really active, but had small balances, you know, and leaked to clean that up. We, uh, did regular reconciliations of the bank sheets or balance sheet bank reconciliations, um, to clean up that. So that's done on a monthly basis. Um, our biggest thing that had the most impact, I believe, to the town was we, um, I consolidated cash accounts and how we manage our cash. So I set up a lot of ZBAs, zero balance accounts, like a feeder fund. So we have our main account that, that supports all the other, um, cash accounts that have activity in it. But by doing that, I could bring it all into one area, keep it at a five million dollar level. If we're worried about the collateralization and insurance, and then the rest can go for partly into money market so that we have liquidity for ongoing expenses. And then the rest could go to investment. So in doing that, we were able to turn over another twenty million every six months, five to six months to turn over to the treasurer to invest by consolidating those funds, taking the tax funds and getting it in quicker. So we used to do five check funds a week, we're down to one. We, uh, did a lot of, um, internal controls where we went into our system and did workflow processes to make sure that everyone's position had their right access levels. They weren't above or below. Um, we automated a lot of processes that, you know, budget transfers. So there's not a lot of paper floating around. Departments have to bring over a piece of paper to us to do a budget transfer. It's all done electronically through their own departments and goes to Josh. There was an implementation of two different softwares that had an effect on finance. Park and Rex, Transfer Station and, uh, Latham all got into, um, uh, MyRec, which has made it so much easier for us, from, uh, consolidation and also reconciliation. That was a very, very difficult manual process for us. Uh, this past November, um, Open Gov went into place, um, which now is an automatic process from us. Uh, again, that was a manual process. We had to hand key all those entries in. Now we can upload it into the system for, um, for reconciliation. We took capital assets that were held in an Excel spreadsheet, um, and brought it into our system. So this past year has seen a lot of improvement processes by finance and with the support of, you know, administration and the, um, the departments. There was a lot of change for some of them because we put things in place that we changed what's always been done. Um, and they were very receptive to it. Um, so we, we, we set goals, finance is now setting goals for our next year of what are the things we want to get into and what are the things we need to change and processes. But there's still more processes we want to change and update. Um, but I wanted to make you aware of some of the things in this last year will be good.
I have a question. You just mentioned that you consolidated, you, you zeroed out, uh, certain, um, capital project accounts and then you moved the funds to other projects?
Yeah, so we typically, uh, bond in arrears. So we have a lot of, uh, when I got to bond in February, you know, we're bonding for projects that have been completed. So we have, um, projects that were authorized but not bonded. So when you have, when you close down a project and you have excess, say it was bonded, it, it a hundred percent, but you ended on spending, you know, ninety percent of that, that money can now get reassigned to another project that's authorized but not bonded.
Who authorizes that?
You do. So in, in the, in the annual process, when all those projects come in front of you, capital projects, tax-supported, uh, tax-supported when they're authorized, we have those long lists of authorization. They're done in buckets, so you identify them as large amounts because we do them in buckets.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no. When I say that, as you remember, we, we do a lot in buckets, yeah. So, um, we got a lot of those cleaned up and closed down.
Thank you.
Very impressive, Ann.
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions? Anybody? All right, so we'll have a motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve the recommendation of the audit committee to accept the audited financial statements. Uh, we have a motion.
So moved.
Very second. Very second, Luke. Discussion.
May I, may we have a copy of the audit of financial statements?
Oh, will we get the final one? It would go out to everyone. Oh, yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, having no further discussion, we'll now vote. All in favor? Motion is unanimous.
Great job.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was my.
Next up.
We have Colin Dobbin and Bob Hamel are both online, joining us.
Fantastic. So item number nine, appointments for the approval of the following appointments to the board of finance. Confirm the appointments of Robert Hamel and Colin Dobbin as regular members for a term ending November fifteenth, twenty twenty-seven.
My apologies to everybody. I had a bike accident yesterday and had to have stitches put in. So you don't want to see what my face looks like tonight. Apologies, yeah. It's, it could have been worse. It's all, I'm all good, but my face is a little messed up, so.
All right, I hear that. I hope you wish for speedy recovery there. So if you wouldn't mind, I guess both of you just give a quick, quick bio of why you're so awesome and so maybe Bob, why don't you go first? And sorry, Robert, why don't you go first?
Bob is fine.
Okay.
Well, I grew up in town, went to West School, Saks, the high school. So I do bring, I think, a unique vantage point. I was elected to town council. Did, sat in your seats from, I did one term and then my commute got the better of me. So from oh nine to twenty thirteen, sat on town council. So I definitely have the viewpoint of budget process from your seats as well. Commuted twenty-five years, raised a family here and have been an alternate for three years now. So I'm definitely up the learning curve and looking forward to trying to help the town stay, you know, stay in the, in the low tax, high quality of life. You know, that I've been used to as a resident for literally since the age of eight. So anyway, be glad to answer any questions, but that's my background. I, I went to Hamilton College and Harvard Business School and and, you know, the one thing I've really been focused on is helping with the cash management with Andrew Brooks. So we've been working together, but that's, that's enough for me.
Thank you very much, Robert. Colin?
Yeah, hi, everyone. I think, I think I know most of you. I've lived in town since nineteen ninety-three. Like Bob, I raised a family here. My kids are now thirty and twenty-eight. I'm a, I was a corporate lawyer for thirty-eight years at Mastercard and provided that at PepsiCo. I also was at Skadden Arps earlier in my career. I was the head of intellectual property at Mastercard and built up a team. So I had about twenty lawyers or twenty professionals reporting to me at the end. I retired last year when I turned sixty-five and I was on the inland wetlands commission for about fifteen years. And at a certain point, I was approached to consider other things. And so I was appointed as an alternate to the board of finance. And I think I've also been on probably about the same amount of time that Bob has, two or three years. And I've also had to come up the learning curve a bit. Because as a lawyer, you know, finance is not the, wasn't quite in my wheelhouse, but I think I've learned a lot by being on the board of finance and served on some of the subcommittees like the pension and OPEB committee. And I also do have a little bit of a financial background. I studied in an MBA program at NYU. I have a Fordham Law School degree, JD. And, yeah, so I think it's been a good experience for me. I, I agree with Bob that, you know, I think our object should be to use, take as little away from taxpayers in money as possible, get the most efficient government that we, we can. And I think we do a very good job in this town. I've always been impressed with the, with the town employees and town government generally. That's a, that's a.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions, comments?
I just want to comment, you guys know that we watch a lot of board of finance meetings. And we very much appreciate your, your contribution and in particular, your demeanor. So I'm delighted to have the opportunity to renew your terms tonight. I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Grateful. I'm grateful that we have such talented, I mean, it's just so impressive whenever someone is coming up for an appointment and you hear their background. We are so lucky to have such great talent and people willing to come forward and serve. So thank you.
And with such a great Christmas tree.
Yes, thank you.
It's the season.
Thank you for both stepping up and serving the community. It's lucky to have you guys devoting your time. So really appreciate.
Colin is, Colin's great. We were neighbors together ironically when we, when, actually I moved back to town after school and working in the city. So he's a pleasure to work with and happy to, happy to serve him.
We had kids, I think, two weeks apart in nineteen ninety-three. And then the second ones also, I think, were about two weeks apart in nineteen ninety-five.
Love it. All right. So let's get a motion here to confirm the appointments of Robert Hamel and Colin Dobbin as regular members for a term ending November fifteenth, twenty twenty-seven. Will someone make that motion? Second. Discussion. Vote, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passed.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. So before we, just two things. So point of chairman's privilege. One quick thing, you'll all see the committee assignments as being handed out. So let it be written, let it be done, those are the committee appointments. If anyone has any particular objection or impulse they're on a committee, just let me know. We'll certainly consider it. But I was, we took into account people's preferences and I think it was important to kind of rotate and change some things up. So take a look and let us know if you have any changes or questions. And we'll talk further about how I kind of envision the committee is moving forward. But as I gave my kind of click update, it's not necessarily, that's pretty much about it.
Just real quick. So the police department is doing a, they have a wall of children's names in Nene. It's just a quick announcement at their new headquarters at thirty-nine Locusts. I was there today to pick up a couple of the, them for my, my kids to do a little act of service. There's still a ton available. So I just wanted to sort of put that word out there that if you have the time and the energy and the bandwidth, none of which I have, but I'm doing it anyway. There's a lot of really deserving kids of all ages in our community that could use some holiday spirit. So I would encourage you, it's three wrapped gifts by Sunday. So if you just go to thirty-nine Locusts and walk right in that door off of Forest Street, right on the wall there, and it's my kids are super excited. And it's not a name, it's just the, it's just the gender and the age.
Okay.
And you get three gifts and Anna Maria Cece, who is a wonderful community officer here, is running the whole show. And so I just wanted to plug that for anybody who might be interested.
Is it specific that they tell us what gifts to get?
No, it's three gifts of your choice, age-appropriate gifts of your choice. So, you know, if you've got something to wear, something to read.
What is the age range?
The youngest I saw was today, this is with Anna Kell, was two and the oldest I think I saw was fifteen or sixteen. So it's a wide range of kids and it's local. And this is a way to have a real local immediate impact on members of our community. So I would just encourage you and, you know, encourage your friends to go take a look.
So the police department chose the kids? Like how, how, how would these?
I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
I would assume it's a reference event.
Yeah, probably Bethany.
So it's probably from Bethany. So it's just, you know, if you're looking, particularly because a lot of people at this time of year ask for service activities for their kids and a lot of the charities and things because of legal reasons, they have age limits. This is a really great way to involve kids in the process. I chose, I chose two kids that were close in age to my kids so that they could go get. But there's like, again, there's every age of it. So I would just encourage you guys to take a look and maybe tell your friends. And it's by Sunday, so it's really, time is of the essence. Anyway, sorry.
Oh, glad you made that. It was awesome announcing. I actually have one other privilege in. One happens to be the big main event of the New Canaan Rams football team winning their fourteenth title. Awesome. The class L final, they beat Darien, which makes it even. It was a great game and I was happy to get up there and, and see it in person. So hats off to the entire team, the coaching staff. It was a tough season, but they made it through and they prevailed and they're champions. And we're super proud of all of them, really. The second, this other subpart to my point of privilege is going back one, one game. The Rams played Maloney and it was a rainy, cold day. And it was a tough pitched battle. It was eight, the score was tied eight-eight with a few minutes left in the fourth quarter. You know, and the kids were just playing their hearts out and the coaches were doing what the coaches do. You know, you could feel the electricity in the damp air and just as a real quick, this thing has a really nice ending. I happened to be on the field. I was on the sidelines. Actually, I was with Tom O'Day as well. And, you know, our team, we marched down and it was about maybe a minute and a half left in the game. And like I said, tie score. We just were having a tough time getting to the first down. So we decided to try a field goal. Now, yeah, was it four seconds? Sorry, four seconds. So it was four seconds left and, you know, having, having played high school football, I can tell you that's, it was a very far field goal. Like total hail Mary to try to make that a field goal. And fortunately, there were two offside penalties by the Maloney defense, which gave us another ten yards closer to the field goal. And the, the play went off, the ball was kicked and when I tell you, it was like one raindrop over that crossbar and it made it, right? So had those penalties not happened, it would, it would, it would not have, we wouldn't have prevailed. But it was what happened next to me just absolutely blew me away. I was taking like a million photos of all of the frenzy and, you know, the kids going nuts and everything, but something caught my eye. Actually, I didn't see it at first until I looked, looked in the photo that I took. And it happened to be one of our players, while all the other ones were just hooting, hollering, you know, jumping up and down for joy, which was awesome. And it was their right to do that. It was one of our players didn't do that. He went over to, there was a Maloney player, it was one of the ones, the kids that went offside and he was sitting on the ground essentially crying. You know, weight of the world on his shoulder that he shouldered, you know, the loss for his team, right? The difference between making it to the championship and not, which is a game of inches, as we know that game. Our player, number nine, wasn't celebrating with the rest of his teammates. What he did was he walked over to that player who was crying on the ground, meltdown and started to console him. And, you know, it's one of those moments that kind of takes your breath away to see that happen where you have, you know, it's a child that has the sensitivity, the honor and the integrity as a victor to have more compassion for that, the other child who is blaming himself for the loss. And I was so taken aback by it. I literally was blown away that our community, our school system, the Dr. Luzzi at the helm and our coaching staff, you know, Chris Silvestri, Lou Marinelli, I mean, to have a product like that of our children in this town, I think is just an absolute testament to all those who I just named in our community and really represents the true best of us. And I have that photo.
I put it on your tablets.
Yeah, I don't know if you could look at it, but if you wanted, you could look at it. I have the photo of the child.
The first item on your top, top of the list.
And I just, so his name is Luke Bopp and I just wanted to give him a special shout out. And his parents is most important because it, you know, really does come down to the parents and how the children conduct themselves. So I'm just blown away and I, 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 I gave the similar type of a comment to the coaches and they appreciated it. So I just wanted to bring that to our attention of just the caliber of, if you have, some of you can see it.
Yeah.
And actually, there was more than, he wasn't, he was the first, he wasn't the only.
Yeah, no, I know there were others. I have some.
It's not just, it was to your point, it's, it's the program. It's not even just, it's, it's more than just one person. It's, it's the way I think our team is.
This is the symbol of the entire program, the school system, our community, the parents, everyone that's involved. I just wanted to stress that out to Luke.
Yeah, it's important to.
Today's meeting.
With that said, we'll have a motion to adjourn. Anyone want to make that motion?
So moved and would you like to tell us where we're going?
Oh, I don't know. So if anyone has to.
Need a second and a vote?
No discussion ever.
Could all head on over to gates for a quick drink if you have time, if not understood. With that said.
A second, the motion is adjourned.
Motion passes.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.